I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can have a roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Diglio.
Here.
Mrs. LaFois.
Here.
Mrs. Teetz.
Here.
Mayor Kuss.
Here. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January fifth, two thousand twenty-four. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
I'll offer the regular meeting minutes from the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting. I will second that.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois.
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Kuss.
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the July fifteen, twenty twenty-four regular meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois.
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Kuss.
Yes. At this point, we'll move to a presentation this evening of an oath of office for Police Officer Brian Zacharuski.
Brian, chief, you want to come up? I'll read Brian's biography. Brian Zacharuski was born in nineteen ninety-eight to parents Mark and Marta. He grew up in Andover, New Jersey, where he attended Florence M. Byrd Elementary School and Long Pond Middle School. Brian later attended Newton High School, graduating in twenty sixteen. Following high school, Brian enrolled at Sussex County Community College, earning an associate's degree in criminal justice in twenty eighteen. He then continued his education at Rutgers, where he obtained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice in twenty twenty. After graduating from Rutgers, Brian worked alongside his father in the family business, building and renovating commercial and residential properties. After gaining valuable experience, he decided to pursue his passion for law enforcement by taking a prep class for entry-level law enforcement examinations. In May twenty twenty-four, Brian graduated from the one hundred and second Morris County Public Safety Training Academy, having been accepted as an alternate route candidate. With a longstanding passion for law enforcement and deep respect for the officers of the Newton Police Department, Brian is thrilled to begin his career as a police officer in Newton, fulfilling a lifelong goal. Congratulations, Brian. It's my honor to recommend you for appointment to the governing body and to hire you as part of the force. So congratulations. Mayor, until yours.
Thank you very much. And repeat after me. I am Brian Zacharuski.
I'm Brian Zacharuski.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of people.
Under the authority of people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of patrolmen.
Of patrolmen.
According to the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Just want to say thank you to town manager, Mr. Russo, town council, chief annulants, lieutenants, everyone at Newton Police Department for helping to make this happen. I appreciate everybody's help. It's a dream come true, and I'm excited to start my career. Thank you. So I first would like to thank Tom Russo and the town council for allowing us to hire Brian a little bit early. We'll be heading retirement with Lieutenant Mueller. Lieutenant Mueller's last day is the twenty-seventh of August. So Brian, we transition off field training, so it'll be a smooth transition for the department, health and morale. So I really want to thank the town council and town manager Tom Russo. Brian is top candidate. We went through a lot of, a lot of candidates. I think it was about ten. I'd like to thank the staff for all the interviewing of everybody. Brian came out as our number one candidate. He's community oriented and his work ethic is just unbelievable. He was helping on his father's business while he was trying to get into the academy, which is a peak in itself. So I wish Brian, you know, safe and prosperous career. He's a great addition to our department. So thank you.
Senator, the council, do you, or would you like to scratch the table?
I want to welcome you and congratulate you. Yeah, I would like to say congratulations and welcome to Officer Zacharuski. You are officially joining the best department in Sussex County, if not beyond our borders. The men and women that you serve with are selfless, professional, proactive, well-educated, well-respected, well-trained, technologically savvy. They're positive role models in our community in their efforts around community policing, being in our schools, being present in our streets. I challenge you to find a better group of men and women to serve with. I want to thank you and your family for your commitment and the selfless work that you're going to do, showing up every day and every night, putting yourself first, running into the danger as opposed to away from it. I don't think any words that we say or sentiments that the public can express can truly convey adequately how thankful we are for your service, for the service of this police department and for constantly being there when we need you and oftentimes when we hope that we don't need you. So thank you. Welcome. And we look forward to having you here for a long time and having a wonderful career in the town of Newton.
Yes, congratulations. Welcome. We know you're going to uphold the great tradition and legacy of the Newton Police Department, and you have a great group to help guide you on that journey, and we wish you the best of luck.
Just a couple of remarks. Michelle, did you have any remarks? I don't want to.
Just wanted to welcome you, Officer Zacharuski, and I know I've met you previously in person, but I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but this is always a proud day. And as Helen and others have mentioned, you're joining the best of the best, and we welcome you and your family. Thank you.
Yeah, Brian, it's a, you know, one of the great parts of being town manager is the ability to hire and appoint police officers. And actually, I start year seventeen today as town manager, and in those seventeen years, I've appointed many people in the police department, and it's always something that's important to me because I know how important the career is to you growing up, having that lifelong ambition. I know the challenges of dealing with Paul Karifi at the police academy. You're smiling, but you know, he's a tough guy, but you know, it's a personal sacrifice. It's very intense. Not everybody passes the academy. Not everybody gets hired by departments that are as upstanding, ethical and supportive as this department. So for you and your family, I know this is a big step, and you know, I pray for your safety. I pray for your success, and I pray that you have a long, happy, and healthy career here.
I'll just take a quick final recess for.
Mayor, we may, I just want to take this opportunity because we don't have a council meeting coming up to thank and recognize Lieutenant Mueller before you retire. Lieutenant Mueller, your knowledge and your experience and your tenure here at the town of Newton is wonderfully appreciated. You're going to be missed. I just wanted to wish you and your family and your loved ones best wishes in your retirement. Obviously, well-earned, and this is what we all aspire to, is be able to take that day when we retire healthy and safely, and wish you the best of luck. I just want to thank you for your service and take this opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll take a five-minute recess for any picture purposes, family pictures, anyone who wants to take pictures. Thanks. So in addition to the first presentation of our new patrolman, I'd also like to announce the awarding of this year's Senior Citizen of the Year Award. Whereas Harry Kaplan was born in Clifton, New Jersey on July twenty-ninth, nineteen forty-eight. He graduated from Clifton High School in nineteen sixty-seven and went on to attend the Plaza Business School. And whereas in nineteen sixty-nine, Harry enlisted in the U.S. Army and was assigned to a test missile launch site in Germany during the Vietnam War, where he was responsible for testing missiles, including the Hawk missile. And whereas, upon his discharge from the U.S. Army, he worked at ADP for seven years before moving to Sussex County and being hired to work for the Newton Post Office. And whereas, Harry spent the next thirty-eight years working for the post office before retiring and being hired as a crossing guard for the town of Newton. And whereas, Harry is a very active member in the American Legion Post eighty-six, where he has served as commander and second life commander. Harry volunteers with the Honor Guard, supporting veterans' services at various events throughout the area. He has also served many years as a member of the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission in Newton. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and town council of the town of Newton, hereby proclaim our appreciation and gratitude to Harry Kaplan for exemplifying the vital role that senior citizens play within their community. In recognition of commitment to both country and community, and most of all, his spirit, love, and dedication to the town of Newton, we hereby name Harry Kaplan, the two thousand twenty-four Newton Senior Citizen of the Year.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations, Harry.
Okay. You know, now man's about to talk anyway. First of all, I didn't think I was old enough to qualify. I guess I am. I think I just made it, right? But when I first moved to Newton some forty years ago, the first thing on my mind was how am I going to give back to my town? Because if I'm going to live in this town, I'm going to adopt this town, and I'm going to do whatever I could to make it a better place to live for everybody. And I immediately joined the first Presbyterian church in Newton, and I immediately became a deacon, where I took care of shut-ins, people that weren't physically able to get to church, ran various food drives to help the people out with food and do whatever I could to help them. And I held that position for five years. And everybody knows me for being a mailman. I was a mailman for actually forty-two years for the town of Newton. And I'm from the old school. When I put a letter in your mailbox, you were my family. Okay, I regarded you as my family. And I looked after you. I was concerned about your welfare, concerned about your family, concerned about everything. And I was basically your watchdog. I mean, I've seen a lot of things in my time in forty-two years, and I've been very close with the Newton Police Department, have always supported me, and are still supporting me by making me a crossing guard, and I appreciate that. But I was always, I was always looking out for everybody on, on my mail route. And as I mentioned before, I'm a veteran. I served three years in Germany. I immediately joined American Legion Post eighty-six. I was commander of the post five times over, second life commander, first life commander. Right now, I'm second life commander. I tell everybody, I'm in charge of life support. I order oil, beer, wine, and liquor. But it's a very important job. You better have that bottle of Bud ready when you're walking through. You're in trouble. But I've always tried to do my best, you know, for the town and give back wherever I could because I consider an absolute blessing that I can live in a beautiful town like Newton. And I have such a wonderful people behind me here that is supporting the town and doing what they can, you know, to make it a wonderful place to live. And New, every day, it just seems to be getting better. Things are getting better by the day. And I'm just, I'm just so happy, just so happy just to be a part of it. And I would do it all again. And I will, as long as I'm here, I'm still going to keep giving back because that's what it's all about. I don't believe anybody should live in any town anywhere in this country if you're not prepared to give back to your town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Harry, if you look to Sam back up, we'll take another five minutes. Take some quick pictures for you.
You've had, I've known you for over fifteen years, maybe even longer.
Started on the board together.
We started out, oh, so maybe twenty years on the historic mission together, but you led a life of selfless service, and you've had lots of titles from veteran to father to friend, mail carrier, but and now crossing guard, American Legion Post, all those things. But when I think of you, I think of you as people were describing you as everyone's favorite mail carrier. You know everything that's going on in this town. As you said, you've seen it all. Yeah, probably, probably more about all of us than we want you to know, but that's okay. And now you're crossing guard extraordinaire, and I've been told that you not only provide safe crossing for our students and people during your shift, but you've been known to also give history lessons. I think Lily would attest to that. You, right? You've told people about the historic buildings that they walk to and from as they're going to school. You talk to them about how important it is to give back to the town, and you talk to our students about how important it is to be of good character and be a good person and just to be.
Lily is already giving back to the town.
And Lily is already giving back to the town.
And I failed to mention that my banner on Spring Street was donated by honor by Lily.
And her family, yeah. And I think that's just a good, one example of a tribute to you and how selfless you've been and what impact you make on others and how you make people feel and just, you know, the life that you have led that has impacted those that you'll never even know. So thank you for your service.
And right next to my father on Spring Street, anybody in his world like that. My father's right next to me. He was a World War II vet. He was a medic in the Philadelphia Islands. And I was honored, you know, to be right next to him on that one of those.
So thank you.
Every time I go by, I slow down. I'm like, nobody sit me from behind that.
So please take care of you, and thank you to your family.
If you slow down and do it. So then you, Jeff, do you want to take a picture or anything?
All right. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us. We'll now move to our first public session of the evening. At this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and to please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council members may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. Please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record. As is customary, we'll begin with anyone in person who would like to speak. If so, please stand up and address us from the microphone, please. Not seeing anyone in person, we'll move to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand.
Hello?
Ludmilla, are you there?
Yes, you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening. I'd like to start first with congratulations to the new officer appointed in our little town. So welcome, Brian. We hope a great career for you. The second is about thanking Mr. Harry Kaplan for his service. If he's still there, thank you for your service. And the third one, I have a question for the members. If you do not have the answer today, at least I'll need some answers here. It is about the, when you approved the lead-based paint inspection methodology. I threw a list that I got today, thanks to, thanks to the town clerk. Sussex County, among the twenty-four municipalities, I see in this list only three of the municipalities. They have approved dust wipe sampling when the others, they have a visual inspection. So I'd like to know if there's any good, good, good reason about that because I find this, not only is a taxpayer, but also is a I am an entrepreneur and I have a small business and comes to the real estate. I find this another burden. I mean, to do the dust inspection, it costs per unit seven hundred fifty a dollar, and that is not the fun on this inflation. So greatly will appreciate if you have some answers why we have approved this and there is not any visual inspection. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCott. If anyone else on Zoom would like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the first, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, another person. Yes, go ahead. No problem, no problem.
Hello, everyone. My name is Edwin Paredes. I'm a resident and property owner in South River, New Jersey. I just wanted to say, I wanted to commend the town on passing the cannabis ordinance. And I believe this was a pivotal step in embracing like new economical opportunities while ensuring responsible management of the cannabis businesses. And my understanding is that Mill Street and the S D three zone are at capacity. Is this town so willing to offer support for the establishment of a dispensary on Water Street? And my final comment is, would the town be open to reconsidering the current dispensary limits within the S D three zone as there's additional opportunities within this area? And property owners are willing to accommodate an additional dispensary? Those just would love to hear your thoughts on that.
Thank you very much.
Could you please spell your last name?
Sure. It's P A R E D E S.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now move to council and manager reports, beginning with town manager Russo.
Sure. For Ludmilla, Newton was required to go through that process for the lead rather than the visual inspection. So that was a state requirement. No plans to increase the number of cannabis retailers. If anything, we had gone the other direction and limited the number of retailers, but you can always reach out to my office and I can send you the ordinances and what is available. Just some basic items. Offices will be closed at three P M. on August thirtieth and closed for Labor Day, and I just want to thank the council since I'm starting year seventeen here and thank them for allowing me to serve as town manager. A few more years left in the rodeo here, but I'd say very grateful for the opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Council member Dixon?
Yeah, I'm just going to take this moment to just congratulate Harry Kaplan on the honor of Senior Citizen of the Year. Throughout the years of getting to know you, I couldn't pick a better individual that is more deserving. I want to thank you for your selfless dedication to this country, to the veterans, and to this town. It is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Council member Diglio.
You and I have known each other since I moved here in nineteen seventy-eight. She was my mailman. And we have been friends for a long, long time, and I want to thank you for all your service, and I want to thank you for always helping me with the memorial parade from the American Legion.
I think you've done it about twenty years. I've always had the job against grand marshals because I was out there delivering the mail, and I'm the one out there meeting everybody. So I always tried to have, and it's a very sad thing to go through losing all our, all of our two veterans that are ready to fly butter and butter. And pretty soon, there'll be none left to honor. And the one that I was going to honor passed away two days before the parade. And he was, he was the one that built the Antwerp Ring years ago, and then passed away two days prior.
Thank you, Council member Diglio. Council member Teetz.
Good evening, Harry. Sorry, I could not be there in person, but congratulations. It is certainly well-deserved. I think I have known you for thirty-plus years, as you used to come to the police station on Saturdays and solve the crimes that we at Newton Police could not because, as was mentioned earlier, you definitely know the town inside and out and who is who amongst the town residents. So just wanted to, again, say congratulations, and I think the only thing that JP left out of your proclamation was the fact that you are one of the biggest Yankee fans around. So we, we share our passion for our, the Yankees together. So certainly well-deserved, Harry. And again, sorry I couldn't be there.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing, I talked about, right? The one thing that really got me was I had a trailer, I don't know if you remember this, I was on the Delaware River, and that's when we had the flood. I really forget when it was off, but they, but they opened up the reservoirs and exploded the Delaware River, and everything was lost. And I remember walking with the mail that day on Saturday and handing you your mail, and I said, Michelle, I have a trail over the Delaware River, and you looked at me and you said, now you don't. Twenty now.
Thank you very much, Council member Teetz. Deputy Mayor LaFois.
Yes, so in addition to my comments earlier, again, congratulations, Harry, and congratulations, Officer Zacharuski. I just want to say thank you to the pool staff for a great season and certainly for their efforts in stepping up to co-manage operations while our recreation staff has been out on maternity leave. Just wanted to encourage everyone that there's still time to go out and enjoy the beautiful Newton Pool and the amenities there as the season is still open for a couple of weeks. Also want to thank Kimberly and her team and all the volunteers for the concerts and the movies in the park this summer. I thought that they did a great job and heard lots of great comments from people that, that attended. Great diversity of music and great movies for having great family fun nights. Also wanted to, if everybody saw already, we have an outdoor mini mural on the outside of the building, which looks beautiful, which is just like the one that's over on Moran. So Tom, making, Tom, thank you for making that happen with grant money and getting that here on the side of the building. We don't have a planning board meeting this month, as I reported or didn't report earlier, but maybe the last meeting. Wanted to also thank our GPW for their prompt repair of the water service leak on Delaware Avenue on August sixth. Happy anniversary, Tom. Welcome to year seventeen. We started together, so I can't believe it's been that long. And Harry, I don't know about you, but I'm at the point in my life where senior is not the word in my vocabulary. It's experienced. So we were recognizing you for your, yeah, long, kind of your experience. And I just want to wish everyone a happy Labor Day and best of luck to our students returning to school. Where did Lily go? She's here. And thank you to the teachers, faculty, and staff preparing for the upcoming year in our three schools. And that's all I have left.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So in addition to that, just echo the, you know, warm welcome to Patrolman Zacharuski coming in. And again, congratulations, Harry, well-deserved, you know, as you alluded to, instrumental in, you know, kind of generating the idea for the banners on the veterans, as well as, you know, getting your own and, you know, creating a herald story out of, out of that. So thank you very much. In addition, as most of you traveling through the town may have noticed, the state DOT did place a surface coat on Route two oh six through the Ross's Corner down to Andover Corridor. Despite the complaints received, this is a DOT decision. These are not town local roads. We have no control over how the DOT handles this outside of, you know, reporting this to the DOT ourselves, which I believe has been done. Other municipalities have joined in this. So hopefully the state DOT can take a look at this and address the situation that is there. But unfortunately, at the moment, we have more or less done all we can do by referring this to the DOT because it is their road despite it traveling through the town of Newton. For the gentleman from South River, as Mr. Russo says, you can follow up with him after the meeting. Uh, for the gentleman from South River, um, as Mr. Russo says, you can follow up with him after the meeting, exchange contact information. We can look further into, uh, to your quest. Thank you very much for coming this evening. It's a bit of a drive, so thank you. Um, and for Dr. McCaugh's comments, um, just to expand on what Mr. Russo said, you are correct. There are two different methods of, uh, lead testing that are required by the state, either visual inspection or dust wipe sampling. In Sussex County, Lafayette, Newton and Stanhope are the three municipalities that were required to, uh, undergo dust wipe sampling. And this is something that's required by the state. Um, this was passed two thousand twenty one, uh, so this, uh, public law, uh, twenty twenty one, chapter one eighty two. Uh, it states that if a dwelling is located in a municipality in which at least three percent of children tested six years of age or younger and have a blood lead level greater than or equal to five micrograms per deciliter, according to a central lead screening database maintained by the Department of Health. Then a lead valuation contractor or permanent local agency shall inspect for lead based paint hazards through dust wipe sampling. This is handed down from the state. We have no control over what method is, uh, available. This is what the state has handed us. And that's all that I have this evening. We'll now move on to our ordinances. We have one ordinance for introduction this evening. I'm sorry, a couple of ordinances for introduction this evening, beginning with ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty two. And this is an ordinance to amend, revise and supplement the town code of the town of Newton by creating a new chapter of the town, Newton Town Code entitled Chapter two ten. Privately owned salt and other solid de-icing materials in storage to prevent stored stult and other solid de-icing materials from being exposed to stormwater. Can I entertain a motion to introduce this ordinance?
I'll offer ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty two.
Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
Any discussion?
Would it be beneficial to explain to the people, um, the public, what exactly that means?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, Tom Russo, Mr. Russo.
Yeah, it's a state requirement, um, mandating certain restrictions as it relates to the private storage of salt and other de-icing materials. Um, we can provide a little bit more information upon adoption if you want, when we do that. But yeah, it's a state mandate for all the municipality.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes, as, as this is an introduction, the public hearing will be?
September eleventh.
September eleventh. Moving to the next ordinance for introduction, ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty three, which is an ordinance to amend, revise and supplement the town code of the town of Newton by creating a new chapter of the Newton Town Code entitled Chapter two ninety eight, tree preservation. To control tree removal and replacement in order to reduce stormwater runoff and pollutants and to promote infiltration of rainwater into the soil. I entertain a motion to approve or to introduce?
I'll make the motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? A roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. Presumably the public hearing will be September eleven?
Yes, it will.
Thank you. Now move to ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty four. An ordinance to amend, revise and supplement Chapter three zero seven of the Newton Town Code entitled Parking. Most notably, section three zero seven dash six entitled Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours on Certain Streets. Section three zero seven dash seven, parking time limited on streets. And Article eleven entitled Schedules Within Chapter three zero seven, most notably, section three zero seven dash forty nine, Schedule two. Parking prohibited during certain hours on certain streets. I entertain a motion to introduce this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty four.
Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
Any discussion on this motion? Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. September eleventh, very good. Our last ordinance for introduction, ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty five, which is the bond ordinance providing a supplemental appropriation of one million five hundred and forty five thousand dollars for various water sewer improvements in and by the town of Newton in the county of Sussex, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of one million five hundred and forty five thousand dollars worth of bonds or notes of the town for financing part of the appropriation.
I'll offer ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty five.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio? Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. Public hearing, September eleven?
Yes.
Well, now move to our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members have requests. In which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Mr. Russo, if you would not mind a rundown, please?
Sure. Two oh eight is a change order for Clinton, West Nelson and Division. Two oh nine appoint Samantha Waldron as alternate to the planning board. Two ten reappoints Janine Roberts as registrar. Two eleven reappoints Terry Osmond as municipal clerk. Two twelve formal appointment of Kai Commando as animal control officer. Two thirteen electronic tax sale. Two fourteen award for Mars Lake Dam Blowoff Project. Two fifteen concurs with my hiring of a certain police officer. Two sixteen change order four for drainage improvements to Memory Park and accept as final and complete. Two seventeen award for Mars Lake Water Treatment Plant Chem Room. Two eighteen project engineer for the SCADA P L C replacement project. Two nineteen refund for disabled veteran. Two twenty contract with Home Depot. Two twenty one cancels thirty five hundred dollars from Water Sewer Utility Fund Accounts Payable. Two twenty two amendment to the Water Sewer Capital, which references the ordinance that we already introduced, and two twenty three bills and vouchers.
Thank you very much. Are there any items that member would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to, um, discuss resolution two eleven, twenty twenty four. As we have talked on the phone, it was a close to the establishment thing for the number of years.
So the updated resolution that you have in front of you has the statutes as provided by Eric's office. The position of clerk gets reappointed for a second three-year term during that three-year term, barring any malfeasance or conflicts or crimes Terry would receive in her fifth year of the tenure. So tenure isn't officially given, but it's provided to as part as that second three-year term. So we did correct that because there was a question about the language that we had. And so you're not technically giving the tenure, but you are giving the three-year, the second three-year term.
And one other question on resolution two eighteen. We already have them as engineers. Why are we now appointing them as project engineers?
Yeah, um, I don't know if you want, or you want Sean to actually reference the, Sean, you want to jump in on that, come up for that? Yeah, Sean. P S and S can answer that question.
Uh, good evening, Sean Sauter, P S and S Engineers. This, uh, resolution, uh, because we're seeking funding through the New Jersey I Bank before New Jersey I Bank can authorize a ward of the contract. They make sure that you have an engineering firm for construction admin and inspection paid services. So our previous, sorry, previous approval was for design through bid. And then once we go to construction, then I bank wants to make sure that there's proper oversight during construction of the project.
Thank you. So it's for specific appointment for specific work relative to that application?
Correct.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank, thank you very much. Any other items?
Uh, no discussion, just wanted to congratulate our reappointments and certainly welcome and congratulate Samantha Waldron, um, as alternate to the planning board. Um, we had the opportunity to interview her prior to this meeting and, uh, looking forward to her service on the planning board. Um, and certainly your experience as a contaminated site remediation environmental scientist. So we look forward to that. Congratulations, Samantha. Uh, no other comments. I'll offer consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I will second the consent agenda.
Any further discussion? I roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets? Mayor Kus?
Uh, be abstaining from checks eleven four zero five, eleven four eighteen and eleven four nineteen. Yes, otherwise. We'll now move to our second public session this evening. The same rules as the first apply. All members of the public are welcome to addresses. Three minutes, any topic? If you'd like to speak, please step up to the mic. Please introduce yourself and spell your name for the record.
Howdy, folks. My name is Samantha Waldron, W A L D R O N. Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to serve my community. Um, I'm very engaged in, um, my home and, uh, I appreciate your kind words and, uh, I respect our town and look forward to upholding, uh, all of our goals and, uh, respecting that I am standing on the shoulders of giants, as I have said before. Uh, thank you guys and, uh, thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in person?
Yes, I'm Wallace Struble, S T R U B L E. I've lived in Newton twenty years now. Uh, my daughter just graduated this past year. Uh, I live on the Annex, Lynwood Annex, uh, I'm trying to get the Annex one way. It's already set up where there's no stop sign on Liberty Street side for twenty years. There hasn't been a stop sign. On Division side, there is. I've had my wall in the last year. I spent twenty thousand dollars on a retaining wall in the front of my house and in my driveway. I've had fourteen thousand dollars worth of damage. Three different people has hit in it because two cars can't pass each other and one pulls off to one driveway and they hit the wall. I just had one done last Wednesday. Hit the wall. Almost eight thousand dollars worth of damage to have come out. I've lived in Newton twenty years. I've tolerated so much. I just trying to see if I can get it, what I have to do to get it to be one way. I mean, literally you can only get one car. I'm sure you all know what the Annex is. And, uh, you can only get one car without another car pulling off onto somebody else's property. The other car would have to back up out onto Liberty or onto Division to let the other car pass. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Struble. Anyone else in person?
Hi, everybody. My name is John McWiggen, M C capital G U I G A N. Um, live on Emmens Avenue. I'm here with my wife Patty and my friend Danielle. And, uh, I wanted to, uh, join in the, all of the, uh, well deserved congratulations for Harry Kaplan. I've known Harry for over thirty years. Forgot to mark down when I first met you, but I think it was the late eighties. So, so it's been well over thirty years. And you've been a true friend to me and to so many others, um, uh, so many others in our town. Um, and that's just the tip of the iceberg because it's already been stated by so many people how much you've served our community. Uh, hey, you've been a tireless volunteer and you continue to be a volunteer. So the award that you received tonight is, uh, richly deserved and I join in congratulating you. Um, and on a separate note, I want to thank the council for its support of the Newton Dog Park. Um, we really get a lot of enjoyment from it. It's been a real asset to the community. Um, and I know that there are many responsible people there and the overwhelming majority are responsible that enjoy the place. And, um, will continue to, uh, be responsible stewards of that park. So thanks again for that.
Thank you, Mr. McWiggen.
Joseph, uh, Atkinson, A T K I N S O N. Um, I'm just gonna piggyback on what Mr. Struble said. I gave you guys pictures of the alleyway. I'm sure you guys are aware of it too. Um, but for me, I haven't had any property damage, so that I'm very thankful, but I have had a lot of awkward encounters with people coming towards me and they pull in my driveway to let me pass. So it happens average like four to five times a week. It's getting kind of busy. Uh, definitely in the last year with all the construction. So I'm sure when the construction's done, it'll quiet down. But it's still becoming like a very interactive alleyway with people coming towards you and it's being two ways is very tough. So just to piggyback on Mr. Struble.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Anyone else in person? Not seeing anyone, we'll move to Zoom. If you'd like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand.
Here, Ludmilla?
Uh, yes, hi again. Um, I will make a small clarification and then in conjunction, I have a question about an ordinance. Um, so thank you, town and Miss, uh, and the mayor for the trying to answer my question, but maybe you didn't get exactly what I meant. I mean, uh, the, the lead and the autism is something is not new. It's been for so long. And really I wanted to see if it was any real data that supports or why the state decided for this three, uh, three municipalities to do the dust. It was a simple question for, I mean, answer from your part, it is a state. My question, it was a little more in depth. Do you know exactly has that to do with the water? Because now uh, as we all know that the town is going through this, um, expense to fix the, the, the pipes uh, filled with the lead and that was just mentioned the day at the ordinance twenty twenty four, twenty five. So since I didn't get that correct answer, I got to do some more homework to see what's, what's going on. But I get that. It, it is important to be removed the lead from the pipes because that's, it's terrible. Uh, so my question here, it is maybe because I do not have my notes on the past. You said here for the bond ordinance, one million five hundred forty five thousand. So my question it is, is this project to cost, is going to cost just this amount or it is just one phase? Uh, since I'm concerned about the taxes, I'd like to know how much this project is going to cost us, uh, completely. And number two, did you guys get, um, did you put that in bidding? So to get the best, who is going to take care of this, you know, is like a, a, a private company? Is the town directly who you are hiring and did you get some bidding out there to get some best numbers? As I am concerned about the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCaugh. If anyone else on Zoom would like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone, close the second, uh, public session. Um, with respect to those who came to speak this evening, before we move on to our other discussion points, if you'd like to leave. Um, from my own perspective, I am familiar with Lynwood Annex. Um, I would support looking into the feasibility of turning it into a one-way street. Think that Mr. Struble, Mr. Atkinson raise good points. Pictures certainly support that, I believe.
Send that to the engineer.
Thank you very much. Um, and additionally, uh, Dr. McCaugh, um, as public law twenty twenty one, chapter one eighty two says, it's um, based on lead amounts that have been tested. Uh, those numbers are held in a central lead screening database maintained by the Department of Health. We do not have access to that database. You would have to speak to the Department of Health regarding lead levels of children in the town of Newton. Um, whether or not it comes from lead pipes or lead paint, I don't know. Um, I believe the state government is having us exchange both at the same time. Or having us test, uh, for lead pipes, having them exchanged and having the paint tested. Um, the method again is defined by state law. Um, I would refer you to both the Division of Community Affairs and the Department of Health for further answers, um, beyond what we can provide.
Both of the state?
Yes. Then, uh, Mr. Russo, how many, how many comments about, uh, the engineering fees?
Uh, Tom, I don't know. You just want to mention about the ordinance being supplemental, canceling the other one.
Um, so the original ordinance was two thousand and twenty four dash twenty, um, and I think there was some misunderstanding between, um, Monica, prior CFO and our bond counsel. The original ordinance, um, two thousand and twenty four dash eight or two twenty three dash eight was for one million one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, and there were additional costs, um, for the water treatment plant. Um, so when Monica called the bond counsel, I think, or she sent an email saying that, um, she wanted to amend rather than supplement. So bond counsel wrote it as if it was amending one million one ten to one million five forty five. Monica did a capital budget amendment. She did a supplemental debt statement for one million five forty five. So in her mind, she added to the one million one ten. Um, but it just got lost in conversation. Um, so So while I was talking to the engineers, we all agreed, we had a conference call saying that, you know, it was a misunderstanding. So I called up bond counsel and in this ordinance, twenty-four dash twenty, two thousand twenty-four, twenty, what was it again? Yeah. He canceled out the old one. It's in the wording. So he basically canceled out the old one and this one's just supplementing it the way it should have been done in the first place.
Is he canceling out the one million one hundred and ten? Or is he canceling out the adjustment we made to the last meeting?
The adjustment.
I'm sorry.
Canceling the adjustment that we did.
Right, yeah.
So the total project is the one million one hundred and ten plus the one million five hundred and forty-five.
That is correct, yes.
That's the total.
That is correct.
That's correct, yeah. And I think it's paragraph eleven in this ordinance that cancels out the old one.
Yeah. And in this circumstance, IBank funding is being solicited, correct?
Yeah, we're on the IBank list, but right now we don't know how much, you know, the projects, you know, the project came in. We did bids on the chemical room. But how much they're going to give, we don't know. We're in a holding pattern. But we are in right now for all the vehicles we purchased. That was like one point seven million dollars and Memory Park, with that ordinance, we just closed that one out. So we should get money for that one. So we're trying to sort that one out first and then as the projects move on. You know, we'll get the grant money and I'll be talking to IBank about it. With the help of the engineers.
And for the sake of the public's understanding, IBank funding permits principal forgiveness on financing.
Yeah, basically it's a grant. But yes, it's principal forgiveness is basically a grant. It's free money. Not free money, but state money that, you know, is paying for the project rather through water and sewer users.
That's, thank you, Mr. Ferry.
I just wanted to make mention that this was a good night for Mr. Struble, Mr. Atkinson to bring that concern because our engineer and our professionals are here in the audience tonight. So they're hearing it firsthand from both of you and we'll share the pictures as well. I think we heard Tom say he's going to forward it to the engineer.
Yeah, I'll forward it to the court.
Yeah.
Excellent. Any further comments on the public session or move on?
So for e-bike discussion, mayor and council, I'll ask the chief to come up, sit next to Eric and I'll ask Jessica Caldwell, the town planner, to come up, sit next to Tom Ferry. You have a memo dated August first, twenty twenty-four, e-bike and e-scooter regulations memorandum, which gives you a nice history of low-speed electric scooters, electric bicycles, definitions, a few reference points as to what other municipalities are doing. This is something that mayor and deputy mayor had brought up as a discussion point. So I'll turn it over to Jessica and then ask the chief to weigh in and then if you can, give me direction if there's any ordinance or such. Jess, it's all yours.
So Jessica, just a little more background. So I had been approached by a couple of residents in town and myself have noticed that we've had a lot more e-bike activity, particularly on our busiest corridors. And then that coupled with the news of hearing about batteries, you know, starting fires and the damage in New York City. We just had some residents that were concerned about the storage of batteries, particularly in some of our developments and buildings where there is high population or several apartments. And then another person that had come forth and said, did the town have anything, any ordinances or any rules and regulations around e-bikes and law enforcement and battery storage? And because they were also noticing that some of their neighbors were storing their e-bikes and their batteries on the terraces or the outer parts of their buildings and some in the hallways of the of the buildings as well. So that's why I had asked if we could do a little bit of homework and then just have an open discussion with the council about what, if anything, we do moving forward.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Jessica Caldwell, town planner. We did provide a memo and did some research on the e-bikes and e-scooters for the town council as requested. One thing that I would note when we're talking about the e-bikes and the e-scooters is they were just added. I mean, it seems pretty recent, two thousand nineteen, to Title thirty-nine for traffic codes for low-speed electric scooters and low-speed electric bikes that generally traveling less than twenty miles per hour. So there are other types of motorized bicycles, which are, if they travel faster than twenty miles an hour, they're actually considered like a motorcycle. They need license registration, mandatory helmets. And they essentially ride on the street like a car. Motorized scooters that travel faster than that nineteen miles an hour, such as hoverboards, motorized skateboards, pocket bikes and sports scooters aren't permitted on public roads or on public land. So those are really for private use on private property. So the regulation is about these low-speed scooters and bicycles. And what we did was provide a couple of ordinance samples. And what they really look at is helping to define what the scooters are, how they should be used, who can use them in terms of age. Yes, so really they do travel quite quickly, but they are sort of available to any age user. So I think safety is important and getting across the information. You can do things like provide signage within the community that helps to bring awareness to you know, the e-bikes and e-scooters should be driven on streets, not on sidewalks. They should, you know, follow motor vehicle laws, mandatory helmets for anyone under age seventeen. And so I think incorporating that into your ordinance is helpful. We have a couple of examples from other municipalities that have done that. Asbury Park is one of them and some of the things that it just basically defines how the scooters and bikes should use traffic control devices, should be on the roadways, not on sidewalks. Talking about age restrictions, speed restrictions for the vehicles. They still have to follow the speed limits that are designated in the municipality. And then there also are some sections about scooter parking and e-bike parking, where they should be parked and then if they happen to be abandoned, sometimes people just leave them somewhere. And then so then the town has to deal with it. So there's regulations about abandonment. And then if there did happen to become, you know, rental type companies and you know, you've seen them in some communities where there are rentals. So it helps to guide if that type of situation occurred as well. So that's kind of the framework of the types of ordinance is I think it's helpful because most people aren't going to go to Title thirty-nine of the state code to figure out what's going on with bikes and scooters. And if you put it in the ordinance of the municipality, helps to define it. And then we can do other things through, you know, grants and then just, you know, year-to-year capital improvements and think about potential signage and information. And it might be good to put some signs out around multifamily structures about how you you know, store and the dangers of batteries and things like that. You can have a lot of public awareness also through the town newsletter as well. I don't know if the chief has anything to add. They probably have a lot of experience with these types of vehicles as well.
There's a disconnect between like the low-speed bicycles and the motorized bicycles. You know, the motorized bicycles do up to twenty. It's like a moped, except it's electric motor. Those are the ones that we really have an issue with around town. People driving in traffic, they're not seen by motorists. They're not expected to, you know, all of a sudden cut in in front of somebody. They don't have a, you know, usually don't have a headlight or a taillight on them, so they're stopping in traffic. People don't know what's going on. I agree with Jessica that there is a disconnect. People aren't going to look in Title thirty-nine. It's kind of confusing when you go and look in there because you know, you have your slow-moving, you have your motorized moped. So it is, you know, a good suggestion from her to make it an ordinance, make it clear and concise and get information out to the public of, you know, what is the difference between a motorized bicycle and a low-speed bicycle? We do have an ordinance on books now that deals with human-powered locomotion devices. You can't ride them on sidewalks, bicycles and such. It's under Title one fifty-one. You know, prohibited skateboards and such in the roadway. So we are covered in that aspect. So but we definitely do need something, you know, with the electric bikes. You know, I see on Spring Street once in a while, people riding the wrong way on like a scooter or something. So we really do need to, you know, define it a little more, make it, you know, a little education to the public. You know, what's, you know, the rules and regulations on these new devices.
Yeah, the education piece is interesting, right? Because, I mean, who thinks of it as a bike, right? And then they're riding in bike lanes and what does it mean when they are outside of the bike lane? And then who thinks of it as like those of us that had seen in the seventies, the mopeds, right? You like turn the weight, turn the crank. I know, I'm looking at the young one here. So back in my day, you would have a moped and you would ride like a bike and then the motor would turn on and then it was like the precursor to the motorcycle. And I know we have motorcycles riders that are sitting in the audience right now too. So I think the education piece is important, as is the whole lithium battery storage. I mean, what seems in my research, what seems to be the issue is these aftermarket batteries that are purchased that are the ones that go with the model and then there's whatever the science behind these things that, you know, create a fire hazard and you can't, I mean, the fire chief isn't here, but apparently you can't just put them out with traditional firefighting methods, which creates a whole other situation. But it's interesting that you brought up that we're already seeing some issues with, you know, scooters going the wrong way. And like, I just see the technology getting more and more complex. I mean, is it Lowe's or Home Depot? I was there at this weekend and they're selling e-bikes like right in the front of the store near the Halloween displays right now, right? Lowe's. And I think, you know, the helmet piece and the education, I mean, I think of social media, I think of our newsletters, I think of our website, all those types of things, but I am wondering about this ordinance and it looks like we could put some things into it. Tom would love your input on this, but from what does it do from an enforcement perspective? What are you guys doing now when you have a bike that's weaving through traffic like a motorcycle might?
I mean, we're, you know, first we educate, you know, and then we do enforcement, you know, that's two-pronged, we try to do. You know, depending on the violation, the order uses a discretion. You know, but we try to educate, say, hey, this is motorized bicycle, not a low-speed bicycle. These are the requirements you need, you know, you can't be riding in and out of traffic. So, you know, it's that prong. To add, I think this is becoming a bigger problem because, you know, when these bicycles and scooters and everything first came out, they were expensive. But now with, you know, technology and with, you know, cheaper batteries and bicycles, the price point is coming down. So it's available to more people.
Correct.
So.
And for many of our residents that are, you know, running errands in town, it's convenient, it's less expensive. It gets, I mean, I saw somebody the other day that literally crossed from Hayek to Aberlord, like across the intersection at a high speed, like across cars. And it was just like, that is an accident waiting to happen. I don't know, let me stop and get some input from the rest of my colleagues, but I think it's something that we need to like, look, I don't like over-legislating anything, but I think it's something that we have to be proactive about if nothing else but from a safety perspective.
I mean, just while everyone's thinking, I would say that we would want to define it. And I think putting together the ordinance would really help us look at those categories. And then I think you could roll out the education based on specific things. I think it'd be important to just let people know what the difference between a low-speed bike and a motorized bike. And the motorized bike, you really need license registration. It's like the scooters that we had when we were young, but you needed a license and registration. You didn't just go drive that, you know, you had to be sixteen or seventeen or whatever with the driver's license. So, I mean, people may not know that and so to try to get the education piece before they go out and buy it and don't know this and start riding it, you know, and so just, I think, rolling out those different aspects. And then the storage and the batteries kind of a different angle. But I think we would have those little pieces that you could target with social media different because you wouldn't want to overwhelm everyone with one giant, you know, giant list of things to think about. But, you know, one time you're talking about batteries and one time you're talking about, hey, these are differences of e-bikes versus motorized bikes. And did you know that if you have a motorized bike, you have to have license registration and be of driving age and, you know.
And with the district like ours, it doesn't have busing, right? I also think, see it as something that could become more and more popular, the more costs, you know, the more that the cost comes down on some of these.
And being such a small kind of community, it's easy to zip around on one of those and get everywhere you need to go. So it's a good option as long as people know what the rules are and they are able to follow them and navigate. Like you're not supposed to go the wrong way on the street, you know, that type of thing. You're supposed to go with traffic. And if people know what they're supposed to do, then I think it's a good option for people.
Yeah, and I think.
I'm sorry. Most of this is already outlined under Title thirty-nine. We are just taking it and putting it into an ordinance to make it more readily available and breaking it down for the community. So it's just easier to digest and understand, so really not over-regulate.
Essentially, what we're going to do is kind of spell it out in an ordinance, so it's easier to digest for the residents so they can understand what is actually there. I do think this is important, you know, for safety with the gaining popularity of them. But in some of these sandport, there isn't much as far as storing of the batteries. I see that kind of is kind of another.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think we would need to do a little more research on that, but it would be good to target some of the multifamily structures where you're probably having the issues, like you said, of maybe put them on your balcony or is it in the basement? Or is it somewhere where it might be not a good place to store? And so we, you know, flush those out. Should we get some more bike racks? You know, I mean, we do have ground funding where we can do things like that. So we just need to identify where we need to do that.
We'd be able to use, sorry, we'd be able to use some of the NPP grant for some of this as well.
Yeah, so, you know, we just need to know, you know, where, you know, target, figure it out, break it down. And then also just get the word out to some of those communities where, you know, that might be an issue in the certain parts of town.
Yeah, and I think that since we still have the opportunity to use that grant funding, not only for the bike racks, but for the signage for the, you know, and I mean, specifically at people that the people that spoke to me specifically live in the apartments on Plainfield, the apartments off of across from Hayek's. Like, again, those buildings where there's a high density population, just concern about, I mean, you turn on the New York City news and it's like at least once a week, there's some sort of big fire that was caused because of a lithium battery that, you know.
So it'd be good information to know where there's been problems, yeah.
Yeah.
If it's a college too. What's college using?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if it's okay with you, we'll continue to, you know, craft something friendly and Michelle, if you're okay with that and then incorporate the storage because that's the one piece we need to do some of our research on.
Just as far as the education goes, a good opportunity, we have Fall Festival coming up. It might be a good opportunity to start getting some stuff out during that time too, something to consider.
Yeah, I mean, even a sort of display or, you know.
I think the key, the key piece here is embracing technology safe. You know, we live in a small community, as everyone has said. Traffic is often a complaint. Here's an additional need of conveyance that is becoming increasingly cheaper, more accessible and offers a different means of conveyance for people to get around in a municipality, in a county that doesn't necessarily have the best public transportation.
Absolutely.
So doing this safely, I think, is very important. And although I'm young, I may be an old soul.
I also wonder about our our bicycle law enforcement officers eventually moving towards something that is a little faster, what that might look like perhaps with a grant.
Have an e-bike as well.
Having that, having e-bikes for our bicycle police.
He's got to chase down the other e-bike.
I mean, all things considered.
You know, there's a picture of a Cushman Tri-Cart at Applebee's that says the police on it.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you very much.
Homework on that.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Next mayor and council, I'm going to ask actually Dave Simmons to come up. Most of the discussion tonight will be on sewer projects, but we did send to you copies of the weekly reports that I get from Fred, Sean and Dave, and I didn't want to leave Dave out of the party. So I thought if we could just walk through just kind of a status on some of the interesting projects that Dave's working on that, you know, I get to discuss with him in our Zoom on Wednesdays, if that's okay.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Dave.
Basically, when we have our meetings on Wednesday.
Basically, when we have our meetings on Wednesday, we touch on a lot of different projects that are in various stages of development, some starting, some nearing completion. Sometimes after several years because of the different requirements that you have to go through and restrictions that you're dealt with. And I'll just hit the major ones if I could. The one that's under construction right now, after several years of getting. Everybody in the same row is Bridge Q six on Main Street in Sparta. Uh. We did our due diligence, meaning the town of Newton, as far as relocating to sixteen inch transmission main, and that work is all done. Uh, there are other utilities that are involved. There are restrictions as far as DEP goes, as far as the timeframes you can and can't work in the stream. And right now, as we speak, uh, they're in the process of. Being in that window where they can do work and their goal is to get the bridge completed by December thirty-first. So it's underway and when that's completed, that'll be taken care of. Uh, another thing we get involved in is the various projects that you see before the planning board. Uh, in particular Quantum Realm, Quantum Leap, some of the conversions you've had. Before the planning board from a single family home to multi-apartment type situations. And we make conditions on all those approvals. And for example, with Quantum Realm, I was there tonight. And they are in the process of by the middle of next month, hopefully having their staff and equipment moved into the new. Hundred and two thousand square foot building. And then their next procedure is to demolish. The existing building and have the pad set. So when they get ready to do the next fifty thousand square foot addition, they'll be ready. And they're working on the infrastructure. They're tying into the sanitary sewer out in Diller Avenue. Uh, Fred was helpful with that information as far as getting that approved. And we're tying into the water main in Diller Avenue, the twelve inch main that was constructed many years ago. In addition to that, for example, with Quantum Leap, we've been working with the development behind Merriam Gateway. To get the necessary easements and the mid-block crosswalk for the bike path. So that goes across Diller Avenue and you'll, you'll be seeing an ordinance and information come before you to authorize that. Once we get to that point. And as part of the Quantum Realm project, they're completing the quote-unquote missing pieces of sidewalk. So it's a continuous pedestrian pathway for the safety of everybody in Newton. Uh, there's also time when we've got to take care of existing infrastructure, uh, the one that the fellows have been working on and. Uh, also Rapid Pump is over on Limecrest Road. There's a pressure relief PR chamber. That they had to work on to replace the valves because they're fifty plus years old and they needed a replacement. And they've been working on that and they're about three quarters of the way through that project. Um, one thing I think you're very lucky here in the town of Newton and fortunate, you've got a great staff. That can do a lot of different things. And the reason I bring that up, two projects we're working on right now, if you'll remember. The town went out to bid for water main materials and what have you for the Mason Avenue Water Line and also New Hampshire Street Water Line. And I was just up there tonight. I was talking to Dustin McGarry, your Newton Water Foreman this afternoon. And they've put in approximately three hundred feet of the new eight inch main from where we left off at the intersection of. Merriam and Gardner, all the way up to the intersection of Gardner and Mason Avenue. They're gonna put valves in tomorrow, barring any unforeseen weather, and then they'll be making a left and go down Mason Street. They decided to do, just so you know, they decided to do that street first because the material is easier digging. They got that three hundred feet done pretty quickly. I was surprised and job well done. We were gonna try, even though we bid out a temporary above-ground two-inch polyethylene main for New Hampshire Street. To put the main, the new main in where the existing main is because of the rock. They did dig some test holes to see if they could get away without doing that. And they could not. So they're going to do Mason Avenue and Gardner Avenue first. They're gonna work over on New Hampshire Street as far as they can go. But that project will probably carry over into twenty twenty-five, because once you put the above-ground system in place. Have to be careful of the freezing weather. Once that happens, you're done for the year. But the fellows are doing a good job on that and I just wanted to report that back to you. Uh. Sean will probably talk about the Morris Lake Gate House and the Blowoff. That's a project that we started years ago. And that's gonna be a good addition to the. Uh, gatehouse and the operation of the dam and we'll report that on the dam inspections that we do every year for the town. Uh, let's see. With regards to New Hampshire Street, we talked about that. Lead service lines, that's an ongoing project. We've got about six more, six to seven more years to work on that. And we continue to work with the town on that. Uh, PFAS, we have gotten some testing information, so we keep on that and keep working with. The town attorney's office to keep that up to date. Uh, again, some of the other projects before the planning board, we've got the former GNH Building, Water Street Holdings. Uh, the only thing left on that right now is the widening of the intersection in phase two. Of South Park Drive and Route two oh six for the turning lane. So that project is waiting for DOT phase two approval and the permits to do that work. There are some other, uh, properties that came in, one twenty-four Main Street that has a potential for four more apartment units. And one of the things after it leaves the planning board that we get involved in is we review it again at the Utility Advisory Board. We've got a couple of applications for some apartment buildings that were improved, the fifty-nine sixty-one High Street. And forty-three Trinity Street, right next to Town Hall here. They're coming before the utility board tomorrow night. To make sure they understand the requirements to get the board's recommendation and also to collect the connection fees. Uh, we've been working with, uh, Sean's office, providing background information for the Rossi information for different projects. As support work for him. Uh, every other week, we have a conference call with the Thor Labs people. And we go over in there, as I said before, on their Quantum Realm, they're getting close to being done for this particular phase. Then they're going to start swinging into two eighty Sparta Avenue. That'll always be the Isle of. Funhouse in my, in my mind. But as far as adding on that, that project's supposed to start in the fall. Uh, we address some drainage problems from time to time. And one thing that I, to be honest with you, really enjoy doing, um, is research on the town's water system for a variety of purposes. And one of the things that's coming up now, uh, you probably were aware in Sparta around Sussex Mills Road and Fox Hollow Lake. There were gas mains going in and service signs being connected. And we get involved as far as researching where the mains are and providing data for the contractor and their consultant. To minimize the chance of any kind of damage to the town's transmission mains. Uh, when I was talking to Corey about a month ago, it came up that. The gas company has a long-range project. I say long range in the next two to three years. Uh, basically starting around Main Street and going up Glen Road and hitting a lot of those developments with gas service. Now, the significance of that is where we come out of the. Sparta Glen with the transmission mains, we've got the ten inch main, we've got the sixteen inch main. Then when we get down Main Street, we've got sewer lines for Sparta. We've got relocated transmission mains over the years because of different projects. For example, the Stop and Shop when that was put in. That we relocated out of the way. So. I literally started back around eighteen ninety-five. I love going back there to be honest with you and getting all those maps. Plus. There's a lot of different maps, as I said, for example, in the Stop and Shop area. Around the Sparta Glen area, things that have happened literally over the last hundred and fifty years almost. They have to piece together and put together. I was going through some files and. When there was a water main break on the sixteen inch line at the intersection of Glen Road and Main Street. I dug through the files and I found pictures of that break from twenty some odd years ago. The reason I did that was because Bill Wilson, God rest his soul, was involved with helping to repair that break. And because of the timeframe involved, it was a situation where not only did they have to. Pour a thrust block approximately seventeen feet by nine feet in area. Because the time it takes for that to cure and harden, actually put a steel I-beam across the street to support that bend. The reason I dug all those pictures out was because when they're coming down the street with a gas main, we don't want them to hit that I-beam and rip that out again. Uh, that would not be good. So we get involved with a lot of, lot of projects like that and, uh, Kat, every week. Sends me over some information from public notices from different developments at Sparta and Andover. And she asked me to check them out. We got put on the notification, uh, so that we were aware of things going on and oops, we just didn't get a call and we broke the main. So we're trying to be proactive as far as avoiding any problems like that. Can't do a hundred percent perfect job, but we strive for it anyway. And that's just a smattering of what we've been doing on our end for everybody. And like I say, sometimes. Some of the things get done right away because of that type of project. Other things are in the development stage and they go on for a period of time. But there's a lot of history and a lot of mapping and what have you. And the other thing we've been trying to do, and I think is a really good thing why your. Water department is doing a lot of the work. They're seeing where it is and what it is in case they have to deal with it. God forbid if there's a main break or another problem. So they've got an intimate knowledge of what's going on. And for example, when we get all this information together for the gas company. We're making PDFs and hard copy for the Newton Water Department as well. So they've got it in their, their, uh, records. Uh, sometimes when I talk to the fellows, I say, well, you remember such and such? And they look at me and they smile and say, Dave, we weren't even born yet. So, you know, I have to, I have to. Give them a little information, which is fine. And I don't mind that. I enjoy that. It's just like. He was talking about when he saw different people around town with the post office and gave him a little history. So it's, it's interesting to talk about.
Questions for Dave before we go to the other end?
Well, thank you very much for all the hard work, Mr. Simmons. It's always a pleasure.
No problem. It's, it's a pleasure to work for the good folks of the town of Newton. And, you know, over the years, we've had a lot of projects and we've had some emergency situations that have come up. And I'll always look back on them and say, A, I hope it never happens again. But B, uh, it was a good experience and everybody came together and worked together. I remember a few years ago on Thanksgiving, there was a breakout on Sparta Avenue. And I remember one of the fellows in the water department saying, you know. One thing about this department. It was Thanksgiving. Nobody said they wouldn't come in. Everybody was dedicated and they came in and took care of it. So everybody else could have a good Thanksgiving and. And good for them. They're good people to work with and it's a pleasure for me to work with them.
Dave, out of curiosity.
Yes, ma'am.
Fox Hollow.
Yes.
When we put in the original pipes, went back to eighteen eighty-five, I think you said?
Eighteen ninety-five. Right.
Okay. That lake was not there, correct?
That's correct.
So we basically had the pipes basically on top of like a swampy area, correct?
That's correct.
When did Sparta decide to make that a lake?
When we were researching some of the recorded information for that, I came across a deed. Don't quote me on the exact names, but I think it was the E-Closs Company. There was some, I want to say discussion, but I think it was probably closer to litigation at that time. Where ultimately between the lake owner and the town of Newton, they came to a settlement and agreement. And I can get you a copy of that, so you have it for your records. But basically, they said, rather than spend more time and money on litigation. Uh, everybody's agreeing that's the way it's gonna be. And in exchange for that, as I recall it off the top of my head, there was. Approval given to allow the town of Newton to go into that property and do any work on its transmission main if and when it had to.
Which we did have to just a few years ago.
Yes.
Because now the pipes are underwater instead of on top.
Yep. And when the sixteen inch main went across, that was actually constructed on bends. Basically, they drove in piles for that, uh, and put the sixteen across. And then the ten inch, when that was broke, then we put the twenty inch across and that was the HDPE fuse pipe. And that's how that was done.
David, I say this all the time, but the sad day is going to come. One of these days when you decide to retire. And I hope that the good people over at HPA, um, have, uh, somebody sitting with you for a better part of a year to do a data dump out of your head onto a database. Or some other, uh, digital system where we can take all that knowledge out of your head.
They joked the other day, they said, Dave, one of these days, I hope a long time from now, they're gonna be putting me in a box. But then they're gonna knock on it. Hey, Dave, we got another question.
Seriously.
Yeah, honestly. I'm sorry, I'm laughing because they'll ask me a question. And I'll bring out four or five files. They said, Dave, we just wanted a fax number, not the whole history. But I, I, I enjoy giving the history to them. I think it's important to pass it on. Which is another reason like your, your staff is working together on all this and they go over everything and you learn something new about the system every day. When they were putting the sanitary sewer manhole for, uh, Quantum Realm in on Diller Avenue. They came across a service line that hadn't been abandoned and cut off at the main. One of those things nobody knew. So.
Thank you for recognizing the staff. I think it's a mutual admiration society because they talk very highly about working with you.
Well, uh, they're, they're very kind, but they're, they're the real movers and shakers of the whole thing.
Over you and for the report.
All right, next up, um, I'm gonna ask Tom Mayer if it's okay. We'll have Tom Ferry walk through. The micro font chart that you have, which I would put up on the screen, but it would be catastrophic to actually try to review. Um, so we're gonna talk about twenty twenty-four projects and I'll ask Fred and Sean to come up.
Um. I think that's okay.
Yeah, so we'll go through twenty twenty-four and then we'll talk twenty twenty-five. And then if you have any questions of the engineers, you also have. Um, narrative, Sean Soder memo eight, nine, and then you have a project timeline from Fred. You can ask them, you know, to walk through it or just if any, you know, projects pique your interest that we can just. Walk through, you know, these are the things we're discussing weekly on a Wednesday, but I think it's helpful for the council to. You know, see these things on paper. So. Yeah, Dave, you're good. Thank you, Dave. Fred and Sean, you wanna come up? Maybe one by Eric and one by Tom?
So brief history, um.
Just one second. A couple of us are bringing up the, uh, spreadsheet.
Thirty-first.
No, that was, yeah, that was, oh, that, yeah, no, August.
August ninth.
Okay. Oh, it's on Thursday. She sent it out on Friday. Now they're looking for the emails. That sends out Thursday, not Fridays. Date, what's it?
Oh, it's, it's, okay, I got it. It's, uh, Friday, August tenth, or August ninth, rather, one forty-nine P M. The spreadsheet you made?
Spreadsheet, we'll give you the synopsis.
Yeah, August ninth, one forty-nine P M.
That's why I wanted to bring it up. I mean, I know we stopped.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. So this was a, um, project I. Had to wrap my head around everything because when I was the auditor here, we didn't have this much going on. Um, and back in the day, we use USDA. Now we're using I-Bank. Um, so. You've got about eleven million dollars in, in unfunded ordinances. Um, I needed to find out how I-Bank worked, how we were gonna get the money, if it was a grant, if it was a loan. If it was part ours, part in part, you know, whatever. So I needed to know of the projects. Which ordinances funded those projects? So that's why I put this schedule together. And then with the help of, uh, Fred and Sean, um, we, I wa, I said, okay, what's? What, what, at what point are we at putting a, you know, a shovel in the ground? Are they done? Are they not done? Are we thinking about it? We're not thinking about it. So, um, the schedule is broken up between. Three sections. Um, in the middle, you can see I got the twenty-four projects that Fred and Sean, um, broke out for me. The twenty-five projects, and then we actually have, uh, suburban engineers and basically suburban engineer projects were. The purchase of all those vehicles, the street sweepers, um, the F two, five fifties, whatever they were. Um, and, and, uh, memory park drainage, which pretty much are all complete. Um, so now. You can see on the top, the first one, we have, uh, the two thousand and, now some of this information, um. Up to. The, so from the left to the right of the, you know, on the right-hand side, account and amount is where. My schedule ended. And then with Sean and Fred, they added two more columns for me and for the mayor and council. I basically got this information from I-Bank. Um, the description, I wanted to know what it was for, you know, what it was doing, um. So. I put it all together. I wanted to know how much I-Bank was gonna pay for it. How much do you, again, how much? Of money we had in ordinances, pretty much unfunded. Um, and which ordinances they were for and, and which ordinance and how much the ordinance was for. And it, and there's some of these ordinances are broken out, um, for two or three projects. Uh, so the top one you can see was the, uh, water treatment plant. I'm not going line by line because we'll be here till ten o'clock at night. So, um. So the, the major one right now, we have the water treatment plant upgrade, which includes a SCADA upgrades. The chemical room, which we're hot and heavy with right now, um, because, um. I think it was Kenny who told me it's like Chernobyl to go into that room because it's, it's like, it's bad. Um, so that that's a major project. Um. That's one of them that got upgraded from about three hundred and thirty-eight thousand because it wasn't thought of that the project was gonna be this large. To, and we just did a bid openings for about nine hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars for that room. And and these guys can actually. Help me out a little bit. So the ordinance for that one, and I'm and I'm gonna stop at this one. Was the two twenty-three dash oh eight. That's the one I mentioned. That was for one point one million, one ten. And I have twenty-four twenty because I didn't update the number. So that's gonna be twenty-four dash twenty-five. Once we uh, once the ordinance gets adopted. Um, twenty-three dash oh eight had seven hundred and seventy-five thousand in for that project. Um. Twenty-four dash twenty was another one point two. So for all those projects, including the um, the um. The chemical room was one point nine million dollars.
Say, I thought it was one point one. The section twenty costs are factored in. So like the professionals, the engineers, the bond council. So. There might be some variance in the numbers because we have to pay for the bond council and, you know, the fees out of the ordinance.
Uh, and and bond council has to get included because there's a lot of stuff they have to get involved in, even though we're not selling issuing bonds or notes or. They still have to do a soft closing. So a soft closing is basically forgiving that forgiveness. But you still have to go through the whole closing project, which, you know, these guys um have to get involved with because. Bond uh bond council was telling me that um, they don't really care how much money you spend. They want it done their way. Even though these guys know a little better than them, they still say, we want something broken out. We want something done this way versus the way you did it. We want your uh proposal done differently. So they have to sit there and write it. So. There's a lot of section twenty costs, but you know, some of it gets absorbed into into the price of the of the ordinance itself, the hard costs. Um, so you can see that really quick, you have um the treatment plant, um, the chemical room. Um, uh Mars Lake Water Treatment Plant, SCADA and PLs, PLC replacement. Um, we got some sewer projects that we're starting to get involved in and what's my um. Mars Lake Treatment Plant, Clearwell and High Street uh Storage Tank Cleaning. So those are the two thousand and twenty-four. I don't want to go into any twenty-fives because not even worth talking about at this point. I'm just trying to wrap my head around these as the mayor and council should. And I think that's what um, I think Fred and Sean. Are here for to talk about those and uh some of the price increases. So.
Yeah, certainly, Ken. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, I guess the first project that we can talk about is the one that you um voted on earlier today, which is the chemical room rehab project. Um, that project, I guess, grew in scope significantly from when we first looked at doing it. Uh, the the initial uh scope that was laid out included um doing some concrete and masonry repair. Um, in order to access the concrete, you had to remove the existing piping and remove the existing electrical conduits. As we started getting into it, um, we then found out that the all the chemical pumps had to be replaced. We then found out that all the the tanks, the bulk, the bulk storage tanks and the day tanks had to be replaced. Um, while we were doing the design work, the uh, in all three rooms, the HVAC systems, both the heating and the. Uh ventilation system, um, whenever you have chemicals, you have to have very specific ventilation for safety purposes. The uh, all three of them went out. So the scope of the project again grew to include all of those. We had gone through, prepared the documents, actually had put the project out to bid. Um, and then um, the uh, the town became aware of the possibility of getting uh principal forgiveness. So we actually had to cancel the bid on that project. Go through the I Bank approval process, which is extremely lengthy and tedious. Uh, Tom gave you a. A a five-minute synopsis, but uh it probably took us a year and some to go through the appro- the approval process to get. The uh, the project approved for bidding out of the I Bank. Um, one small example of what it takes, once we actually got the bids in, which was in May. We submitted all the documents to them. They didn't give us the authorization to award actually until um July, end of July.
So Fred, just, I know because there's been a question about like what's been the delay on some of these projects. And I know that you guys, especially in looking at some of these reports, thanking for preparing them. There's a lot of detail. There's a lot. There's so many moving pieces, but I just wanted to underscore what you and Tom were saying in that. The opportunity for us to go to I being funding ultimately and likely will lead to principal forgiveness. And so. We're on their schedule. We're on their, they, they move slower than. Probably any other governmental agency that we work with. But in the long run. This is much better for our taxpayers and for us ultimately to be able to get these huge multimillion dollar projects done. And the way that we've scoped them and the way that's best for our infrastructure and then get the principal forgiven.
That that's correct.
And so we're at the mercy of this slow-moving I Bank ship.
They they move at glacial speed, as I like to say.
Right. And so it's not the lack of being ready or not having, you know, not doing the work and not moving forward. It's. To this entity that we're kind of held hostage to.
No, e- every time they've asked us for more information or anything else, we respond back within a week at the outside. And then it's usually. Two to three months before they they respond back to what you sent them. We actually have meetings with them on a monthly basis to try to keep, because we have uh probably a dozen projects in various stages. With the I Bank right now, um, just to try to keep them all moving. And even when you listen to them talk to each other, it's like, oh, I can't get a hold of that one, or I can't get a hold of this one to get an answer. So you can imagine if they can't get a hold of each other, what we're going through.
I recall at a meeting that I had, you know, both you, Fred and Sean, you guys were talking about how. You guys have been proactive in scheduling these regular meetings with them to keep our projects kind of. Front and center, top of mind, and to move them at a speed that. We try to move them that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's exactly.
We have a call tomorrow afternoon, actually. Two thirty is our next call tomorrow afternoon.
Sorry, Fred, go ahead.
But I do have a question, okay, Fred, Sean, okay. A year ago, April, we approved that ordinance for one million, one hundred and ten thousand. Now we're approving an additional supplemental for one million, five hundred and forty-five. That's a huge increase. And I'm just wondering, why do we have such a huge increase in less than? Fourteen, fifteen months? Because I know that's a concern of mine. That's a very large increase, even though some of it may be forgiven or. It's still a huge increase. And if it doesn't get forgiven, that's a very major increase to taxpayers. I'm concerned about that.
Uh, I I can certainly understand why. Um, and a- as I mentioned before, the the biggest thing really was that. Uh, this, in the case of the chemical room rehab project. That went from the, you know, the original estimate of three hundred some thousand to just shy of a million dollars. Um, a- again, that's because the scope went from concrete and masonry repair, some piping and some electrical conduit. Now all the pumps had to be replaced, all the tanks had to be replaced, all the heaters had to be replaced, all the the exhaust fans had to be replaced. So the scope just mushroomed as we were, the more we looked into it, the more problems that we found and that had to be addressed. And this is not something that was done, you know, in secret or in hiding. Everybody that was. Uh, aware of the project was kept abreast and was involved with the decision, yes, we need to do this. So let's, let's move forward and do it right.
And not to minimize it, but to give an example. So for example, you go to change your faucet in your sink, right? You wanna go to something that's newer and sleeker or whatever. You go to pull that out and realize that there's been water dripping behind the wall and that there's damage behind the wall, maybe a little mold behind the wall. Now you have to pull that out. What's what started as a simple faucet change has now become. A replacement of everything that's underneath your sinking, splitting cabinetry in the wall behind it because you didn't realize that this other work was there. It's almost, some of the projects, learning a little bit more about some of these, some of these, we think that it's going to be a replacement of equipment. But like you said, now it's all the piping that's led to the equipment. There's additional newer. Laws and regulations, so there's additional costs that come with the newer equipment, et cetera, et cetera.
That's correct.
Having a water and sewer system is much like owning a home, is what you're talking about.
Very big and expensive.
Punk steroids.
If I could do that amended ordinance too, when we went back with uh Mr. Ferry to figure out what that. The month, what what was allocated in that amendment. There was an additional three hundred thirty-five thousand that was uh for the High Street Pump Station PLC, which. I think was just to raise that cost because I think the previous CFO didn't wanna. Later increase the budget. She was trying to do it now to cover five hundred grand, but there was three hundred thirty-five in there as well, yeah.
Um, I guess that takes care of the that that first batch for the uh, the the water treatment plant. The uh, the Morse like chem room is the one that we just discussed now. Uh, as far as the sewer line, uh, the rehab project. That actually is, the design's been completed uh for quite some time. Uh, it's another one of those projects. We have the opportunity to get the principal forgiveness. So it was submitted to I Bank uh again over a year ago. Um, and we've been told by them for the last month and a half, any day now, we'll get the authorization to advertise. So, you know, the project is is done, it's sitting, it's waiting for their okay to bid.
And then we still have to advertise it, go to bid, accept.
Go to bid and then when we, once we do go to bid and get the bids, we have to send them all the information and get their permission to award.
To award and then they're.
Then we can award.
So Sandy, to bring up something, I just wanna ask clarification for about the I Bank and the principal forgiveness. What, barring we meet all their requirements and their standards, and obviously this happened several times that. You have meetings with them, they tell you, oh, you need to change this, you need to change that, and that's what drags this on. What is the likelihood that we wouldn't get the, like, is there a situation where we really wouldn't get the principal forgiveness? No, you've got enough?
Well, it is first come, first served. Uh, and we're now in the next fiscal year. So we, while we didn't, we missed last fiscal year, we're now in the next funding cycle and we believe we're at the top of the list.
Yeah.
As far as in the in the. Who's coming in for principal forgiveness?
So is that something that could push a project further down the line potentially if we wanted to? If they were at their limit for a fiscal year, would we potentially have to push a project further down the line in order to meet that or?
Um, I guess you would have the option to either move forward with the the funding without the principal forgiveness or or try. And see if they'll allow you to push it into the following year to get into that next cycle. Um, but every indication, again, as we've said, we meet with them every month. Uh, every indication they've given us is that we will get principal forgiveness. Um, they do not tell you until you close.
No.
So you don't know how much you're getting or, you know, a hundred percent what you're getting. Um, but again, every indication they've given is that we are, we're in the front of the list.
Okay.
But because it is first come, first served, and that's why it's important to have all, everything ready on our end to go and to do all that work ahead of time, which means. Having the professionals and having everything ready to go preemptively. Right, do the ordinances, spend the money to do the work, even though it's like a hurry up and wait situation.
Right.
So this is the fun part for me because everything is up in the air. So. It's not like we have, you know, like two, four million dollars laying around. So I have to work with Fred and Sean. And see where we're at, when the projects are gonna start going. So that we have the funding, temporary funding in place possibly, if we have to. Um, you know, we can go to I Bank as the projects move. They can give us money upfront, but it's all a timing thing. And that's the fun part. Yeah, that's what keeps me up at night.
So the only one under twenty twenty-four is the same thing. We have the uh water treatment plant SCADA project, which everything's been submitted. We're waiting for authorization to advertise. Same situation, uh, that, you know, the SCADA system is essentially replacing the computer, the larger computer at the plant. So. And it's Fred and I discussed, I understand for new projects, new construction, that there may be environmental constraints, but. Here, this is at the existing water treatment plant in an existing room. We're not tearing down walls or anything. This is where I think this should be like fast track.
Yeah.
Through, you know.
Same thing with the sewer project. You're replacing an existing sewer in an existing trench, but.
I- in some cases, when we get on the calls, you know, they do their diligence because it's required to do a cultural resources review. Environmental review, turtle review. Uh, I get that for the newer construction or expansion of plants, but in this case, um. Yeah.
Well, we're pushing the sewer um, the sewer line replacement because it's um, four hundred eighty-five thousand is America recovered.
That's right.
So we have to, by the end of this year, we have to have the monies at least encumbered. And by the end of, I think it's twenty-six, we have to have the monies dispersed. So we're pushing that one way around. And um, I've been talking to Fred and Sean a a lot. Trying, you know, make sure that we're starting this project. Because, you know, and and I think we're pretty well.
We're just waiting for them to give us the go-ahead. Everything else is done. It's there.
A month, even if they take a month, it's still, we still might be able to bid that out and and get it encumbered as soon as we get an invoice. But that's four hundred eighty-five thousand that we have upfront in cash.
Right. Um, so I I thank you, Tom and uh Terry and Kat, because we're gonna start to get these um reports on a regular basis. But what I like about Fred and Sean, your report is that it's a, it's a running log of sorts, right? Um, on the status of these projects and like the work that's been done and what's outstanding. I mean, I think that these status updates are good because if there are questions, we're able to go back and look at and see what's been done and. Answer some of the basic questions, certainly not the technical questions. So um, thank you for the work that you've put into some, they're very comprehensive. Sandy, were you gonna ask?
I'm not sure if they're going, uh, okay. I'd also just ask it. My concern is the Sparta uh Avenue Pump Station. I know that we started originally with Mark McDonald in two thousand seventeen. I um know how much we spent in attorney fee, not attorney, but in engineering fees over the past seven years. Where are we and when are we going to break ground? It's seven years.
Uh, that's, it's another one of those projects where it it's sitting with the folks at the I Bank. Uh, the project, uh, again, the project was designed, was permitted, including wetlands permit, which is a challenge unto itself. Um, and just as we were getting ready to go out to bid, again, uh, the opportunity came up to get the principal forgiveness. So uh, we were directed to change gears and then pursue the funding through I Bank. So we restarted that whole process. Uh, during the course of going through the I Bank review and approval. Uh, the wetlands permit expire or the LOI upon which the wetlands permit was based expired. So we had to start that process all over again. And that's been. Two and a half years, something like that, three years. Getting the, just getting the wetlands permit straightened out because you can't get somebody from DEP to respond. Um, we finally have gotten to the point where um, everything has been completed supposedly to their satisfaction. And we're just waiting for the permit to be issued now. But um, it it's been a nightmare dealing with these people.
Now, once the permit is issued, what is the next process?
Basically, we submit the the permit and um, the the approved plans to the I Bank. And then they give us the authorization to advertise so that we can go out to bid for the project. But, you know, you know, the project was done, designed and sitting, waiting to go for three years.
See, that's where my concern is. Because three years, price and guarantee is also going up.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I absolutely agree with you, but um, when you have the opportunity to get the grant money, it makes sense to pursue it. Um, and unfortunately, we have to go through this exercise in order to get.
The challenges, when I talk to my colleagues, other towns that are a little bit in a different financial position. They don't play ball with the I Bank because of the process and how long it takes. We're in a financial position where, you know, the council, right, we've talked about grants and being aggressive with grants. So when these opportunities have come up, you know, we've talked about it and we've all agreed that if there's an opportunity for the forgiveness. The challenge becomes, I mean, the DEP, most of the staff isn't even in the office. So they have their own set of challenges. I Bank. As Fred and Sean have said, are. as Fred and Sean have said, are are harder, I won't say they're worse to deal with, because they're very bright and they are helpful, but they're very slow in their pace. So it becomes that delicate balance of pursuing the grants and trying to help out the rate payers, because it's not the taxpayers, right, it's the rate payers, versus, you know, dealing with the I-Bank and fingers crossed and hope that we get money on the back end. So so with every project, we're always trying to balance. Monica was helpful. Tom is great with it, the engineers, you know, we brought Sean on board and, you know, their firm to help support Fred, because a lot of this was on Fred's plate. Not that Fred couldn't do the work, but you can see the tsunami, because building and building. And I felt like Fred was drowning and I, you know, and just tried to help him move along and Sean, you know, Sean's firm has been great. Um, but it's, it's not a question of the engineers not really putting together the information. It's we're trying to help the tax, you know, the rate payers with these opportunities for grants and, you know, Fred was correct. I-Bank will come back, we'll we'll initiate some sort of change or suggestion, or, you know, it's really not a suggestion, you have to do it. And they're very quick about turning it around. And then it sits, and then we wait, and then and that becomes the dance, and it's unfortunate. As you can see, a lot more issues on the sewer end of things, but there's, you know, there is more, there are Mars Lake issues that we're addressing too. You know, as Tom Ferry would say when he was the auditor, right? But what do they want? They want the Cadillac version of everything when it comes to the DEP, so we don't have the luxury of nickel and diming any of this stuff. And yeah, Sandy's correct, the the numbers go north, but uh, this is why I kept saying, like, I don't have the luxury of not doing these things. And every week, the, this is what I'm staring at, and this is what I'm hearing, and we're all just kind of supporting each other and pushing each other with Kenny and Adam and Eric's support, you know, from the legal end. We just got to keep pushing, because we don't have the choice. We have to move these things along. So it's it's been a lot of work. I understand the council's frustration, but I I just ask for grace for the professionals, because they are really putting in a lot of time. And Tom's been great, you know, Monica was great. Tom, I think his next level, just because of the auditing background that he, you know, kind of brings to the table, but that's why I wanted to have this discussion, because this is what I see every Wednesday. I wanted you guys to see it and hear it, so that, you know, there was no miscommunication from my office to to you guys, so.
But Tom, just to be blunt, the alternative is, we, if we want to expedite the timeline and not be open for the opportunity for principal forgiveness, then the alternative is to push forward and all of this expense, several, several millions of dollars, gets passed out to the rate payer. And you're going to do rate increases, you're going to do.
Yeah, because that might, and that might be a conversation next year, is looking at the rate structure that we've already done, but based on this, maybe that's another conversation that we really don't want to have, but maybe we might have to have, because we were fairly conservative in our approach phasing the increases in, but yeah, I mean, and I, it, everything's a trade, so you want, we we moderated the increases and we're we're trying not to take on too much debt. Well, then the alternative is to seek funding, and like Tom said, it used to be USDA, now it's I-Bank, right? It's a different funding stream with different challenges. So like I said, it's that balance of rate that's versus bonding versus grant, and it's just this continuous loop that you're just trying to find the the best opportunities to help the town out.
Now, you can, I mean, you could, could you pursue USDA funding, but but at the end of the day, the rate uh, payers are still paying for that, because that's not.
And those those tend to be loans more than grants, right?
Um, I think it's forty-five, fifty-five, forty, forty-five grand, fifty-five loan.
Right.
Over forty years, which, um, I was going through this when I left Sparta, uh, S- Spurrow. We were doing the same thing, because their stuff is all, you know, beat up too. And they were doing USDA.
Right. The the grant percentages are probably twenty-five percent now. It's not
Yeah, same.
Forty-five or fifty percent like
Right.
like it was way back in the.
So that's still passing the cost onto the rate payer, so.
Yeah, you're passing.
Yeah.
You know, twice the.
And over forty years, the interest is more.
Right, more than the project cost.
Quadruple the the principal.
Tom, when it comes to the DEP, would it help to get maybe Senator uh, Space involved or any of our assembly people to see if we can get that permit pushed along, so we can go to the I-Bank, so we can get this, these projects moving?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that would be, you know, when it gets to that point, the nuclear option, I I and I've I've brought this up during our meetings. Let me know, back in the day, Senator Oraho, right, but to say, yeah, do we need to pull in? Yeah, because, go ahead, Eric, go ahead, jump in, but.
The nuclear option has merit. There's only one caveat I'll indicate. You got to find people at DEP.
Yeah.
And there is nothing magical, folks, for Newton. Uh, you can't find people at DEP. Ever since COVID, they have nowhere to be found. I've been told you can roll bowling ball down the the halls and at forty, twenty East State Street and not find soul. They are scattered to home and everything takes forever. And finding them is half the battle, and then the other half is getting them to talk to each other. Because I think Fred may have commented about that, and so has well Sean. Where I'm suffering these problems in number of municipalities, where one part of DEP isn't talking to the other part of DEP. And I think the answer potentially, if we, if you can't get any further, is bringing, you make the call. I think it makes sense to make the call, but I want you all to understand that unlike the good old days, where you could make the call and amazingly, somebody could find somebody, you got to find somebody to find somebody to make the call to.
I think that we contact.
And and actually, the head of government affairs is applying, so.
But yeah, we'll we'll push whatever buttons we can to move these along there. So. Any other questions, or maybe Michelle, I don't know, Michelle, if you had any questions for Fred or Sean, I know you've been patiently listening, but.
You're muted, Michelle. Tell me.
Okay, sorry. I was on the wrong tab. You think I would know? Um, no, no questions. I think this is good information, though. It's just a lot. But it's good.
I will say thank you for all the information. I appreciate it, because I did read pretty much all of it. So when Tom knew I would.
I knew you would.
Uh, so I do want to thank you for all the information. And I do hope that we will keep getting these reports, so we can keep up with what's going on.
Yeah, you're going to get the weekly reports, uh, you know, you'll get them as part of your monthly, but I get them weekly, so that when it hits that point in time, you'll get the latest and greatest from from all three. And then, um, I think that'll be helpful too.
And I'll keep updating this.
Yeah, I'm going to update the spreadsheet.
As we go, it's a help.
Yeah, it's a breathing document at this point.
Like the spreadsheet, actually.
Fred, you want your colleague to say anything? I think he has it.
He had some comments prepared too, Doc.
Yeah, uh, Sarim is uh, has been working with me for some time. He's the person who's had the pleasure of dealing with the folks at the I-Bank on a day-to-day basis.
Sorry.
So uh, he can certainly share some of the frustration um, that that he's had. I don't know if you want to introduce yourself.
Yeah, please, if you could.
The council.
Part of the group.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Sarim Jalil from PCI. Uh, yeah, I've been dealing with the I-Bank and DEP people for some time now. Um, specifically, I can speak on the Sparta Ave Pumping Station for the permit. Uh, this man named Stephen Dench from the DEP. And I, I think it was elaborated in the report that Fred had prepared for Sparta Ave Pumping Station, but yeah, it's been uh, some time since. Yeah, I've been trying to get in touch with him over our most recent revision that we had to do, and I haven't been able to get a hold of him for, you know, a good two weeks now. So just something, you know, we're just waiting on him, and once we get that from him, then we're good to go.
In in two weeks, it's nothing. It's usually months before you.
Yeah.
We even knew, so for for weeks, we hear that they couldn't get anything on their permit. I have a guy in my office that worked for DEP, who's now does work for us. And I said, can you call down there? And he said, who's the guy? And then, so he called down, and we actually got a response. But now we're back to.
Waiting on another response.
Yeah.
I'm going to have you friend go back down again.
Yeah, yeah.
It's quite a story. Thanks. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Now, now we have other stuff. They have executive. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Drive safely.
All right, any uh, final counsel or manager comments?
Yes, Tom, thank you for having Tom Ferry do all this work with the engineers. Because, yes, I have been like a dog with a bone, and I'm not about to give it up either. I will keep on it.
It will always help you out.
I know. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Right, uh, at this point, we'll move forward. Um, we do have uh, resolution in our executive session. A resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve for the purposes of attorney-client privilege.
Under B seven, formal action may or may not be taken at the conclusion of this executive session.
I entertain a motion to enter executive session.
Tom, I'll I'll second.
Time is twenty-one sixteen. Gentlemen, at this point, yeah, if you'd like to exchange your information with manager, if you haven't done so already, you may do so. Otherwise, we're going to be entering into an executive session. It's not open to the public.
Let's give a five-minute break.
Oh, cool.
Can I get the motion in the second? I didn't catch that. How long?
You seconded it?
At nine sixteen, for those of us who are all coming over every time.
All favor, I.
I.